To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the Special Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, July 19th, 2017. This is a special meeting in which we are addressing just one or two small issues. We have a small administrative issue to address and then we have a big substantive budgeting issue to address. On our agenda, we have alerted the public that we will be speaking about capital, project funding, sanitary sewer funding, and pension funding. As it turns out, I believe we will be holding off the pension conversation until September at our next special meeting, and tonight we will be concentrating on our capital expenses. Before we get into any of that, we will give the public an opportunity to speak and have a period for public participation if there's anyone in the audience that wants to say anything. All right, seeing none, we'll dive right into it. And the first item on our agenda is a discussion and possible motion to approve the Radnorshire Room rental for the ABA auction. And Bob, if you wouldn't mind giving us just a quick once-over about what this is about?
Sure. We had received a request from ABA Auction who in the past rented The Willows to do auctions of fine art and jewelry. Since The Willows is not open, they had looked for another spot to do this. They had inquired about the Radnorshire Room, which is this room here that we sit in, for July 29th and 30th between 12:00 and 4:00 each day. They would like to keep their merchandise in this room overnight. The room rental for the hours used is $3,600, but if we calculated that all out, for the room would be $9,600. We ended up coming up with a negotiated price of $4,000 for them to use the Radnorshire Room. Since it will be vacant, we thought this would, the dollars for you to use a vacant room here for the $4,000, we thought it would be good use for this room. So we'd ask the board for your consideration for the reduced rate on this fee for this room.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to rent out this room as described by our township manager?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Bob, what do you mean by reduced rate? I didn't understand.
If we rented it per hour, since they would be keeping this room locked, since they would keep the items in here, they wouldn't leave. Actually, we had calculated that they'd be technically using this room throughout the whole period of time instead of just the hours of use. So that's why it would actually be less usage of the hours.
So it's $2,000 per day?
That'd be correct.
Is there any discussion at the board?
These folks have been running from us for many years.
That's correct.
So even back before we closed The Willows.
Bob, what is their expectation as to the security of the merchandise overnight?
There is none. They would have to provide it similar to what they had done when they utilized The Willows, when they were there providing security. So outside of the building being closed, they would still have to provide us with insurance coverage and whatever else that the township would require as part of this. And if they would want someone to stay here, then they would require someone to stay here.
The building exterior is locked, of course.
That's correct.
And are these doors lockable?
They, these here, I believe they can be locked.
All right.
But again, too, it's their responsibility now coming into it exactly how it sets up. So in the past, I believe they had someone at The Willows that stayed throughout the entire period of time. So I imagine they're going to have someone that'll do that.
You're going to have a written agreement for this, aren't you?
Yes, we'll have this in. We'll actually have this through.
You should have a disclaimer in there for liability for theft or damage to their property.
I'm sure that our solicitor will make sure that we're well-covered.
He'll be involved? Okay, good.
I'd just rather have us not do this. I just don't see this being consistent with our role in government. I don't know why they need to do that here. And I just don't see us in that business of renting this room for that purpose.
Any other discussion? Anybody from staff? Anybody in the public? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the room rental as described by, excuse me, Mr. Zinkowski, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes five to one. Next on the agenda, this is going to be all Bill White, who has a presentation, I believe, or a discussion to lead with us regarding capital project funding and sanitary sewer funding. So take it away.
Okay. Madam President, if I may just kind of introduce it a little bit. We would thank the board for taking time to begin this process here. We know that when we concluded the budget process last year, we talked about having discussions regarding funding the capital budget. That was something of concern by the board for the long-term, coming up with a funding plan for capital budget as well as the sanitary sewer system. Capital, we know that, we talked about needs, we talked about funding. We had a lot of discussion last year during the budget process, and I know that we're going to have conversations throughout 2017. We know the challenges that, again, with replacement of equipment, infrastructure that we have. We know the requirements that I'm sure we'll be seeing, additional requests from like the fire department, too. The fire departments, both Bryn Mawr and Radnor, I'm sure we'll be seeing requests for increases there. Stormwater, I think, would fall under this category that we would want to consider this because that is a capital improvement, needs versus funding. Also, too, as part of this, we looked at funding options. We had discussions years ago about sale of assets. I'm not sure if the board wants to revisit those or not. We talked public-private partnerships, reduction of services, that whole host of items that we had discussed over the years. So again, too, those, just for your consideration, because I think at this meeting tonight, we're looking at the higher level of this and not into a lot of the details. So this kind of begins, I think, what we would talk about in building, correct me if I'm wrong, this really begins the 2018 budget process here for the township. So at this point, we'd be looking for the board for feedback, some input or things you would like to see from us to prepare, if you'd like reports, if you'd like any detailed data, information, we'll be more than happy to put that together for you as we start to move now down the road through July, August, and into September. We know that on the sanitary sewer side, we know that we have old sanitary sewer lines. We have multiple problems throughout the township. Apparently, as we all know, the one on King of Prussia Road. I know Steve will chime in later and talk about the miles of sanitary sewer pipe that needs to be replaced. We know we discussed that again, too, at the end of 2017 in the budget plan that we'd be discussing this this year, too. And again, a lot of these with emergency repairs. We know that as the system continues to get older and the usage, that we will continue to see these types of breaks into the system. And again, I think the board has done a nice job of looking to make these repairs right, permanent, when we do these and not continue to keep coming back at these and picking away at these. Some of those we've seen where, you know, you've inherited some of the problems that we're looking to resolve now. So I want to thank the board for looking at these tonight, taking the time now to begin this process. And with that, Madam President, without objection, I'll turn it over to Bill White.
Thank you, sir. And I'd like to echo the township manager's thank you for getting together tonight and just reemphasize the point that typically in October, when the administration is rolling out its recommendation for the budget for the following year, that's the only time during the year where we have discussions regarding some of these items. And last year especially, there was some additional questions or requests that we have these conversations a little bit more on an ongoing basis. So tonight serves the, is to help start the conversation as we head into the budget season so that, as the manager pointed out, we know that we're putting together information in a manner that the board is looking for. So for my part, what I'm hoping that we walk out of here tonight with is making sure that everyone has an understanding of the capital plan itself in terms of what's included in it. As the manager pointed out, I think for tonight's purposes, we'll stick to the 30,000-foot view. It's, the projects are all listed in the five-year capital plan for each of the years. I don't think it was the intention for tonight to start deliberating one project against another. That is what we'll be doing during the budget season when we're into a little bit more of the details of the numbers themselves. Tonight is just an opportunity to make sure that we understand how the capital plan is set up and then talk a little bit more of how we've funded it the last five years and then what the capital plan projections look like over the next five years. And again, when we take a look at that, we'll be looking at summary amounts. They won't be specific per project. We will have them broken out into their categories, but they won't be project by project. And the reason being is to, I think if you look at it at the summary level, it becomes a little bit more obvious where the funding shortfall might exist in the future and where we would want to focus a solution. So those are the two things I'm hoping we walk out of here tonight with is an understanding of how the plan's built, what's in it, and then how it's funded, or how it's been funded and then what the projection looks like. So this is a little bit of refresher. Ian, if you could pull up my computer, just take a second and step through the capital plan. I'm referring directly to the plan as it exists in the 2017 adopted budget.
Dramatic pause.
While we're waiting, have we been contacted by Bryn Mawr Fire Company in the last week or two about capital?
We have not.
Because at one of their, the lower marrying commissioners meeting, they approved funding 50% of the capital budget that was presented. And of course, the comment we always get is, you can talk to Radnor for the other 50%. My answer was no, that's, they have to figure out where to get the money.
We have not been contacted, so yet.
So are we working from version two of the 2017 budget? So if somebody wants to follow this at home, they could go on the website right now, call up the 2017 past budget and go to page 167 of that document, and you can follow along, which I'm, we're looking at the five-year capital plan.
As you can tell, we'll be looking for new equipment within this room here. That's one of the upgrades that we are looking at here for the technology on this side of the room, which comes out of the cable fund.
All right, so, all right. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Okay, so the five-year capital plan, as Commissioner Schaefer pointed out, is 165 in the budget document itself. It's labeled as November 21, 2016, version two. The details of the plan go department by department. And again, we're not getting into the line items, but just to get, make sure that we have the understanding, all of the fleet items are identified by each department. This page specifically is talking about the police department, all the vehicles, and all of the equipment that we would capitalize are listed. And then it lists out year over year what the anticipated funding needs are. And we do that, and then, as requested by the board during last year's budget, we included a replacement plan page for every item in the capital. So we go vehicle, in this case, we have all the police vehicles, their description, a picture of it, the description of it, the, what it's used for, and then at the bottom of each page, what its replacement plan looks like. And we do that for all of the, each of the departments in terms of both vehicles and And then, we then get into the capital projects group. And the capital projects group includes all of the township-owned infrastructure, which includes our sanitary sewers that is funded for with the sewer rent that all the properties in the township pay annually. And then we have the road and bridge construction group, which has two funding sources. The liquid fuels portion we receive from the state, that takes care of our road resurfacing program, our annual road resurfacing program. And then we have the township funds portion, which basically is everything else. That includes any state or any township-owned roads that we want to pave outside of what is funded through liquid fuels, as well as any of the other bridges that we may want to fund, again, outside of what liquid fuels would pay for. We also have the facilities group. Those are all the building and fixtures that the township owns. Again, the general fund is primarily responsible for funding any of the capital improvements or capital upkeep to those facilities. And each one of those facilities is identified in this specific spreadsheet in the same manner, manner as the fleet. We also have a signals group. We identify all of the intersections within the township that include signals. And then what a replacement plan for those, each of those signals might look like within the window of time that the plan is presenting. As we were discussing last fall, the window was 2017 to 2022. Then we have our park plan. Oh, I should note, the signals plan as well as the park plan, again, those are other aspects of our capital plan that our general fund is primarily required to fund. There are no other specific sources, specific renewable or ongoing sources that help pay for those. One aspect that did come up during last year's discussions, and there's been a couple, this year, is there are fees that are imposed for various impacts to park land that those one-time payments can be used to help pay for some of this capital, as well as the portions of the improvements to the parks that include the trees. We also have the commemorative shade tree fund that has balances in it. Those funds could be used to not fund playground replacement, but to the extent a park improvement includes tree management, those funds could be used there. So there are a couple other sources that the township does have that could help support the overall cost, but primarily, when it comes down to capital improvements to our parks, it's the general fund that's required or mostly responsible for that. And then the last group, over the last few years, the stormwater group has probably received the most public airtime in terms of the discussion of the capital projects as well as the funding component for that. As it currently exists, there's a stormwater fee that's imposed on all the properties of the township that generate the dollars that go into this fund that then pay for any projects that the board elects to proceed with. So when we talk about the stormwater component of the capital plan, I'm referring specifically to the aspects of that fund itself and the stormwater fee, the dollars that are used to pay for it. At the, at the end of the day, the commissioners have discretion over the general fund dollars, especially, so if, if, for example, there are projects that are beyond what specific fees could you, could generate to pay for those, the board could allocate general fund dollars to plug those gaps. And there have been times where the township has done that. So I'll switch gears a little bit now to our sources and uses. This same information is also included in the capital plan itself. Right at the front end of the plan, there's a table for each of the years that identifies funding sources and then the funding uses. And if you'll recall, the uses, we broke into two categories based on potential funding needs. So if you'll recall, we had a pay-as-you-go capital group and a pay-as-you-use capital group. And the thought behind breaking them into those two different categories was the pay-as-you-go capital group are those capital assets that generally have shorter useful lives where current dollars or cash is usually the best, or short-term financing is the best method of funding those. And then on the longer life cycle asset side, we have those broken into the pay-as-you-use capital group, suggesting that those projects have longer lives, which opens the door to other funding mechanisms such as longer-term borrowing and those, and those options. So when we talk about the pay-as-you-go, each of the, this group captures the, the capital needs that, as we've got them broken down by department. So we have administrative, which is one of our smaller needs, that's, that's mostly, an example might be the, the meeting room upstairs in this building, and other capital needs that, that aren't captured by any of the other departments or specific to any of the other departments. Then we have all the other departments broken out and what their capital needs are. In the pay-as-you-go capital group, we have, oh, I should also note that within the pay-as-you-go, we have the fire service contributions. Those amounts for 2016 and seven, well, 15, 16, 17, it was at 283,000 and some change each year. That's kind of a gray area. Some of the equipment that the fire companies are utilizing those dollars for are assets that do have longer useful lives. So other financing could be discussed there. But as it exists right now, we're using current resources or current general fund dollars to pay for those. On the longer side, the pay-as-you-go, that's where we get into our infrastructure, sanitary sewer, stormwater, road and bridge, traffic control systems, our buildings and grounds, municipal parking lots. We have the library facility broken, broken out separate, mostly out of past practice. The township has always accounted for that facility separate. I'm guessing because of the lease that we have with the separate entity that operates out of it. And then we have our park improvement group. This table that we're looking at right now is showing from 2012 to 2016 how we have funded the entire capital plan. And I'll, actually, I'll jump to the bottom line first and then jump back into how we got there. But if you take just the pay-as-you-go portion of the plan, we, there has been significant overfunding, again, just for that portion of it, which has then been utilized to pay for the pay-as-you-use portion. So the bottom line, the fund net activity in each of those years is, we had wide swings in 2014 and 15, and I'll explain that here in a moment. But when you look at years where we've transferred dollars in from the general fund and spent those dollars roughly in the same year, it will never get to zero, but it's the variant, the net activity is closer to zero, with one year being negative, the two other years being positive. The reason why there's such a wide swing in net activity for 14 and 15 is if you'll recall, we had transferred a large portion of the $8 million tax settlement in 2000, that was received in 2013. We moved that to the capital plan in, to fund 2014's, or in 2014 and use that to fund 2015. So 2015 transfers were less because they, on a cash basis, were transferred in the year prior. So what we've done over the last five years is we've basically funded the entire capital program through, for the most part, through general fund transfers. That, that is by far the biggest portion of the dollars coming into the capital plan. I've got the row highlighted here. In any given year, you could see that out of the total sources you generated, the general fund transfers represent the largest piece. We did have a significant amount of contributions in 2014 that went towards specific road resurfacing projects that we partnered in terms of timing with Aqua and Pico at the time. But other than that, it's, it's basically general fund dollars. The PEG grant, we received the, this is the Verizon portion that is deposited into our capital fund, of which 80% is then paid out to Radnor Studio 21 upon receipt. And that's part of the dollar amounts that you see down here for PEG Radnor, is not only our 80% contribution to Radnor Studio 21, but then the costs that we incur to keep this room, keep the technology in this room working. And then these other receipts, interest income is just on the cash investments, the short-term investments that we have with the idle cash in that fund. We do get a small amount from the sale of property and equipment. It really just depends on what type of equipment that we're trading in at the time as to what we're able to generate there. Grants, you're probably wondering why those are so low. If we have, in recent years, we've had grants specific to Clemacrone, to some of our trails. Those projects are accounted for in their own completely separate bond retirement funds. Since those have a complete set of self-balancing accounts, those are not part of any of the dollar amounts we're looking at here. So the grant revenues associated with those projects are accounted for in those separate bond retirement or bond retirement funds. But these are the grants that we receive for the little odds and ends that, that we're funding through the capital plan. So you can, if we take a look at the last five years, we could see that, again, the fund cash will tell us everything we need to know because that's basically telling us that the net activity in the, the capital improvement fund has been healthy as a result of the general fund transfers that have been pumped into it. And we've talked quite a bit during the budget time, the source of the dollars that are being utilized to transfer out of the general fund during this window of time from 12 to 16 were predominantly the revenues over and above what we had expected on the business tax side. So we were fortunate to be in that situation where those revenues were not necessarily anticipated, but they did help us bridge the gap. did help us bridge the gap and fund our capital plan during this period of time. If we take the capital, if we take this information and then we blow it out to include what is currently in the capital plan that's included in the budget document, that's what you're seeing now on this table in terms of our estimated sources. Again, we asked, we estimate 160,000 per year from the peg. We do a little bit better than that, but at the same time, the 80% of those dollars are coming right out. And then we estimate what turns out to be a pretty insignificant amount for interest and sale of property and equipment. Again, with the, the overwhelming majority of what we anticipate coming into that fund recurring year over year are the general fund transfers that are used to fund the pay as you go portion of the plan. And where that becomes obvious is that when you take a look at the net, the pay as you go versus the pay as you use, you could see the pay as you go from 2017 through 22 is for the most part balanced. I would anticipate as we proceed through those years, we've got some fluctuation that those, those would be smoothed out. We wouldn't want to necessarily budget for a spike like this. We would probably, if, if the spending stayed exactly where it was projected to be, we would probably decrease the amount of general fund transfers just to keep that nice and level. And obviously, because any dollar we don't transfer from the general fund is most likely going to be needed in the general fund for everything else that, that fund is required to pay for. So then what, where we come up short at, or the category we come up short in is the, the pay as you use group, which is again, our, our major infrastructure items that we don't have a dedicated fee to fund. So that excludes, for this discussion, that excludes the stormwater and the sanitary sewer, and it leaves all the other categories, road and bridge, facilities, park improvements, parking lot replacements, and the signal group. And as projected in the plan, if we were to fund it exactly as it's on paper now, we would have to come up with this, these amounts on an annual basis to fund that. And it ranges anywhere from just shy of a million to one and three quarters million dollars. Again, I would anticipate, like anything else, as we proceed year over year, that gets smoothed out a little bit. Other priorities jump in, jump up in line where some others maybe get pushed back in line. A good example of that is earlier this year, we had anticipated needing funds to resurface the South Wayne parking lot, given all the other circumstances with the library project and the need for those funds. So the sidewalks that the board elected to do, we shifted the priority around a little bit on that. So I think as we go over time, we'll, those things will be smoothed out. And if you just use the average of the annual need for that category of capital funding, it's roughly 1.26, 1.3 million per year. And if it goes unfunded, the fund cash, as you could see, we would run out of money in that fund sometime in 2018, or 2019, which obviously something, we would either not do the projects or we would fund the projects. We would not be able to let that fund go into negative cash. And then this information over here is mostly for information, just so everyone can see the different categories of funding that exist within the two different, larger categories of funding. So what we'll be looking for when we put the, the 2018 budget together is the board's thoughts on not just the specific projects, because obviously the board's going to have to come to some consensus on those, but also some consensus on how we want to fund the, the, the gap, if you will, in the pay as you use category. And as I mentioned at the outset, and the township manager touched on some of these as well, I mean, there's, there's plenty of options. When we talk about the pay as you use, the township does have the ability to borrow, where we match funding, we match the, if we were to borrow, we, the annual debt service on the financing would mirror the useful life of whatever asset those dollars were used to improve. That, that's where you get the pay as you use concept, is the taxpayers are paying for that asset over its useful life as they use it. The pay as you go suggests that it's cash already received by the township, paid for with cash, and then there is no matching in terms of those who enjoy the benefit of the asset versus those who help fund it, which is why we got in, when we separated the, the capital plan into those two categories, that was the, the reasoning behind it is to match those who would pay for it with those who would enjoy the use of the asset. It's a concept, it's not law. Obviously, the board has the control over how those things get funded. That's the way that we decided to at least present it at this point. So that's something we would look for the board's input on, in terms of how the plan is, is organized and reported. With regard to the sanitary sewer, bear with me just a second, I need to open that spreadsheet up. So everything that we talked about up until this, or that I talked about up until this point, is general fund obligations. So we would rely on the general fund or general township revenues to pay for. At the end of the day, most of those come from some sort of tax, either the real estate or the business tax. It could also mean that we've borrowed and are using tax proceeds to help pay off the debt. The township manager talked about any, there are public-private partnerships, monetizing assets, or some combination of all of those. We've, in various meetings throughout the years, we've, some of those concepts have come up, and the board's direction has been pretty clear on some of them. So it's, it's not the intention to, to rehash some of those discussions, but just to make sure that they're still on the table for consideration when we talk about how to fund So when we take a look at the sanitary sewer, this information was presented with the budget. The sanitary sewer fund consists, well, it's, it's funded entirely through the sewer rent that the township imposes on all the properties based on the water flow information we get from Aqua. The billing amount has been the same for the past four years. The last increase was from 2013 to 2014, when it went from $5.74 per thousand gallons to 590, and has been at 590 for each of the past four years. The uses of the funds, or what those, what the sanitary sewer rent funds are used for is we have a component of the Public Works Department sewer crew, that their payroll and related costs are funded out of that, as well as any equipment they would, they use to clean, repair, and keep the system flowing. There is some administrative costs associated with regard to liens, legal matters that come up, and then the, the cost of doing the billing and collection that we, that we do every year. And then the last two components are the capital component, and then obviously the biggest one is our contribution to RHM. And our payment to RHM is, is similar in term, similar mechanism as the, what we use to build the residence and the, the business owners, is it's based on a flow of sewer through their facility. So there is a correlation. But by far, the, the biggest obligation of that fund is our payment to RHM. What you can see here by the capital dollars from 2014 through 16 is, is that in certain times, there's been a large capital outlay, and I can, but by and large, there's not a regular capital component to what we're spending the, the sewer rent on. The 621,000 in 2013, most of that was actually for a burst line on King of Prussia around July 4th of that year. And then we had deja vu again this year, except it was a bigger problem this year. And as you've seen through the communication from Steve, the estimates on that are roughly, going to be roughly a million dollars, which just further emphasizes the point that there's, there's a system underneath the ground, a lot of which is aging. And if those two situations do anything else besides fix the immediate problem, it also demonstrates that repairing those type of breaks on an emergency basis is far more expensive than if we were to plan those out as part of a systematic upgrade of the system. It would be much more cost-effective to, to plan them out and do them before they break.
So how do, how do you know that, Bill?
How do I know what?
You just said.
That it's more expensive to do these on an emergency basis. Because, well, with 2013 specifically, it actually broke on July 4th. So we were paying not just overtime, but we were paying overtime plus holiday pay for the work that needed to be done to repair that line. If we were to plan that out, it would be on regular time, and the cost savings there, there, there's cost savings right there, even if the pipe itself...
It might take longer. And I guess, how would you know what you're going to repair based on underground breakages of forced mains? You mean, so I, I guess what I'm going to push back a little bit is that you know for certain it would cost less. My sense of it is, is that if we did try to figure some way to replace large or systemically portions of the sewer plant, of the sewer facilities, that we would be spending millions of dollars every year. It would be an ongoing thing. We would have just as much overtime, and it would be an ongoing process. We might actually be spending less by just focusing on exactly what breaks and addressing it as it comes up. I don't know that to be the case, but I, what I don't want to do is just say, oh, it costs, it costs less if we, if we fix the whole system, because I think you'll spend millions more if you, if you fix the whole system.
Well, if I can, that would probably be the, with no, no, no offense, that would probably be the most archaic way to approach it, because I guess if we're looking, we don't want to spend money. We cannot spend money and just always respond to problems. That's a, that's a good way to do that. However, we have problems in the Midland area, which is one that probably should have been picked, fixed 20 years ago, and the problem only is going to getting worse, and it's going to cost us now what it should have cost us 20 years ago to fix it. Now you put all the escalator of those costs on, what is it going to cost us today to fix that? You look at the shortsightedness of the repair that was done previously of the years ago Bill spoke about on July 4th, that someone decided to say, well, we're only going to fix this part of the problem because we don't want to spend the money of the sewer fee because somebody, because we want to use the sewer fee to do something else with, which I think you probably know what was done. But the issue is at hand, if we would have fixed that whole line at that time, we wouldn't be even having the conversation today because that would have been done. The township would have saved a lot of money for not doing this repair today, because we would have been able to do that in a competitive situation and save cost. But for us to do this and wait for things to...
So you're saying, if we would, in 2013, when that, that main broke on King of Prussia Road, you would have said, you know what, we'll just replace the whole thing and we'll tear up King of Prussia Road from the bridge all the way down to, to Gulf Creek Road and to replace the force main. First of all, to even set that project up, bid it, you would have, you would have taken that whole summer. It would have taken, it would still would have taken a whole year. You would have been working through the winter, and, and we would have been replacing something we didn't know was broken. Now hindsight...
Which we know, we know the problem was there. We know we had an issue with that system. We know we had an issue with the pump station down there. The issue is, is being able to basically say, we're going to fix these things. We're going to bite the bullet and we're going to fund these and do these. However, I don't think the township has had the courage to say, we are going to fix these and we're going to put a plan together. Because what I'm going, I'm going back earlier than 2013, when there was a short stretch of pipe done, which I'm not sure Steve has the date of that. But when that was done, under another administration, under a different time, when only a small repair was done, I'm talking at that time, they knew that this part on 2013 should have been repaired at that time and down further, but said, let's just fix what we have right now and we'll worry about this later.
I guess...
This is the problem where it continues to cost more and more and more. So if you're willing to pass it on to somebody else and say, for today, we're just going to fix what we know has a problem, but we're going to saddle somebody else with problems, because I'm going to use the Midland Sewer Project as a perfect example. That only gets worse and more expensive by the day.
Well, here's what I would, my pushback on this is that by taking the logical extension of what you're saying, we ought to replace the entire sewer system at Radnor.
Commissioner Booker, if I may, so from a facilities maintenance standpoint, and whatever that facility is, it's a refinery, it's a pipe in the ground. So where we are today is totally reactive. We, we live what you just said. When something breaks, we fix it. And we do lose the competitive bidding process. We lose the planning that we could normally do. So this project, literally, I'm, I'm planning on the fly as we go through, as well as emergency permits. But we also risk liability with the sanitary sewer, whether if a line collapses or breaks apart, whatever, pick one, we have backups, we could have backups into people's houses, or we could have a pollution incident where we dump into a creek. We have a lot of lines that run along creeks. It's, it's standard...
But again, I'm not questioning any of that. What I'm saying is, taken, taken your logical exclusion, extension, we should be planning on replacing the entire sanitary sewer system at a cost of tens and millions of dollars.
There are, there are areas that need replacement, and there are definitely areas that do not need replacement. We would not replace, so looking at the pipe history, 1800s, 1900s was terracotta, vitrified clay, and then we went to asbestos cement. We have areas that have pipe that's over 100 years old. Those areas need to be addressed. We have areas where the pipe is severely deteriorated. We, we know that that pipe will be an issue, another emergency issue, if you will, today, tomorrow, next month, next year. I, I can't tell you when. But we have the ability to address certain problems before they cause that pollution incident or that backup, and we can do it with a competitive bidding process, where when we just react because it's broken, we, we lose all that. But we do not have to replace the whole system. That's, that's not, by no means what we're saying.
What, what are we saying then? What do you need?
What I'm saying is I have a, a list of projects that we would prioritize for you and price out and place over a certain period of time. The trouble, the trouble spots, there's no doubt, are North and South Wayne, because some of that pipe's over 100 years old, and it runs under garages and houses and mechanics' garages. I, I've been with our guys where we've traced these pipes. You would be amazed. We have lines that run behind houses, through houses. So those need to be placed back in the street with good quality polyvinyl chloride pipe that's resistant to chemicals, resistant to a lot of things, is airtight and watertight, and gives us a good system moving on. But by no means do we have to replace all the pipe in the system. There's a lot of work to do, but not all.
Right. And we wouldn't have known that we needed to replace King of Prussia Road anyway, right? That would, that wouldn't have been one of the ones on your priority.
Actually, it would have, because it's, it's asbestos cement pipe. It's 50 years old. That's problematic. So asbestos cement pipe doesn't have the ability to, to flex and take the harsh chemicals that can come from the san, the sanitary sewer gases, that HDPE, which we're using, high-density polyethylene pipe for this replacement now. So yes, that was one on our list, absolutely.
But it still sounds like you're talking... But it still sounds like you're talking about millions of dollars a year over a period of many years.
It's similar to the Stormwater situation. It's taken us 100 years to get into this situation, and it's going to take us a long time to get out, but at a cost per year over years. There's a lot of pipe that needs to be replaced on a high priority basis, on the next priority. There is a lot of work to be done. We haven't done that work. We have a pipe in Wayne that dates from the 1890s. It's well past its useful life.
Steve, out of curiosity, are you familiar with other townships that do have proactive programs where they address on a priority basis? Like you have a program? Is that common?
It's, you know, everything is based on the money, but in the most places that I know, and in the other townships that I've worked, we did institute programs where we were replacing sanitary sewer. We had a caveat in the budget of X dollars for an emergency repair, but we were systematically going through the system and addressing those need-to-be-done spots. Does that mean somewhere else couldn't be a problem? No. That could still occur. But we were looking at doing X lines a year or certain projects over a two-year period to try to address those things, whether it be on a capacity basis or a failure basis.
And a long-term proactive program like that, in your experience, is that funded through sewer fee revenue or from general fund?
It was funded solely through sewer fees.
And wasn't it millions of dollars a year?
Bill, you can answer this. I'm looking at our budget. This is right on her point. The cash balance in the sanitary sewer fund, this is page 167, is a mere $56,000. Does that reflect the fact that perhaps our sewer rate is too low? When you compare all the other balances, liquid fuel's almost $1 million.
Commissioner Higgins, if I may add, it's, and to Commissioner Schaefer's point, it's not, a lot of these are funded not solely by the sewer rental fee, but by a tapping fee. Almost every township has a tapping fee, based on the capacity. And that tapping fee is, the businesses know, or the developers know when they come in, and that tapping fee goes into your fund, can only be used for sanitary sewer. There's very specific things it can be used for. But that tapping fee helps fund capital projects. It has to be used to do that.
Do we have a tapping fee?
We do not.
And that's only new construction or new hookups?
That's correct. I think I brought this to the board five, five years ago. And yes, and the thing is, the developers expect to pay it, because when they come into the township, they call me and say, we can't find your tapping fee. I said, that's because we don't have one.
And what is the magnitude of a tapping fee?
It's based on the cost of your system and the capacity of your system. We have to go through a process to determine what we were legally allowed to charge as a tapping fee. We go to DEP, we get that approved. I've seen some townships, it's $1,500. One of our neighbors next door is $3,200 per EDU, per equivalent dwelling unit. Some are more expensive. Again, it's based on, you go through your system, literally, line by line, what we paid for, what somebody else paid for, the capacity, and it, boom, out comes a number, and that's what you charge per equivalent dwelling unit.
But these are just new EDUs.
Yes.
So I mean, in reality, the cat's sort of out of the bag here. We're not going to have that much new construction, that that's going to fund a million dollars.
The big, some of the big issues, there's no doubt, they have passed, but it's still a funding mechanism versus our connection fee, which is pretty small. But, you know, when you have, we still have redevelopment going on. If you look at Lancaster Avenue, if we were to have another 427 East Lancaster come in, or one of them, you could have 10, 12, 15 units, and that money starts to pile up. And again, you just use it right back for your system.
Madam President, there is one of the options that the board can consider. I'm not sure if this is something you want to or not, but it's something that is happening in this area, also in the state, and also in the country, is where communities have sold their sanitary sewer systems, to where possibly a utility may take it over, and it's treated as such, to where you have, basically, it's similar to your Aqua Water, your Pico Power. Basically, you have a utility or someone owns your, the sanitary system, and you divest yourself of that and all those expenses. And then it appears to a utility, to the homeowner. So you sell off your asset as your sanitary system, exactly as what I think Commissioner Booker was leading towards. You have an expense, a monstrous expense that continues on, because when you look at all the miles that are underground, it never ends. It will only grow and grow until you replace this. And you look at just the short extent of the repair on King of Prussia right now at $1 million, which at, how many feet are we talking about?
A quarter, half mile, I guess. So what is that?
So we're going to replace under 2,600 feet, and this project is well, well over above $1 million when it's all said and done.
And then you look at the miles that we have to replace, so you do the quick math. This is what we're looking at. So this is an option if the board wants to look at. I know I started to do some research on this now poll together, what this would look like and who, you know, what communities locally have done this and have moved this direction of what that impact would look like.
Yeah. It's funny that as, as we were having this discussion about replacing the sewer pipes, I was thinking in my head, well, in the private industry, in Aqua, everyone knows they're tearing up our entire town because they're on this constant replacement schedule. And it's, you know what, in 10 years, when they've finished all of this plant, they're going to start again. And that's, you know, it's a part of doing business, is constantly keeping on a schedule to keep the infrastructure working. So not that I'm advocating for going, you know, turning our sewers private, but I'm just saying it's, it's an interesting, two different approaches.
But at least it's, it's there for consideration to the board, you know, and that's all it is, is consideration. So not, not that it's taken any other way.
Yeah, I want to jump back to the question that Commissioner Higgins posed. I'm actually looking at page 149. And the fund balance we were estimating when we started 2014, or we were estimating to end 2017 with was roughly $694,000 in the sanitary sewer fund. What you'll see when you look back through the years is that in 2013, we were at roughly 2.2, 2.3 million, and that has dwindled down over the years. That's a combination of keeping the sewer rent fee flat during that period of time. We had a couple of large repairs during that time. And water consumption throughout the township has been down each of those years. So the revenue generated by the flat, the $5.90 fee has not kept up with the increased costs that we paid to RHM.
Just merely based on the dollars. So again, I think that we only had one year where we had more than half a million dollars in repairs on the sanitary sewer in the last five years.
Not including this year.
Not including this year. So if we had a program like this, we're sure to spend a half a million or a million a year.
We have, we have pump stations that need to be redone. Yes, there's a lot of work to be done.
Will be, it will be more, but you're saying it will be more money, but it'll be less per unit of repair done, is what you're saying?
And, you know, we had the big conversation last week when RHM was here. Part of this would be, usually when you're replacing a line that is in really bad shape, there is an infiltration issue with that line. That would be addressed in that. So there's also ways to go after just going after infiltration. And you would line the pipes, but honestly, in a lot of our pipes where we have this, they're in such bad shape, the lining would give us a poorly misaligned, smooth pipe. So we're in the replacement end of things for some of the worst lines right now. But we do have lines that would be, fall under other repair methods. But yes, it's a costly proposition.
Right. And my point was, we're going from 30 or 40 or $100,000 maybe a year to something like 500, a million dollars a year forever. And, and so that that is more money, and that's my concern is what, and then basically saying, well, we'll increase the sanitary sewer rental fee. And from seven, what is it now, $7, under $7?
Yeah, $5.90.
$5.90. So, you know, what can that tolerate? You show on here an 18% increase, you're kind of projecting. That's a big number on the sewer rental fee, 18% increase, and that's the kind of numbers we would need for an ongoing program of replacement.
Well, first of all, the spreadsheet, the forecast spreadsheet that I have, that's, that's just algebra, that's just math. There's other funding mechanisms that would necessarily require cash.
Like the tapping fee?
Tapping fee, we could use financing to smooth out the cost of those improvements over time. It doesn't all have to be with cash received in that year. And those are options we haven't really dug into yet.
Well, financing makes a lot more sense, because that's the idea that the person that uses it is the one that's paying for it.
Yes.
So you only have, there is a sewer fee is enough for the carrying.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, that's one of the primary arguments for the financing, is you are matching the useful life with those who are paying for it. In terms of how it impacts the township's balance sheet, because I know there's, there's an immediate reaction to additional debt, but when that debt is borrowed and invested right back into the, an asset of the town, it's neutral, because you have an increasing asset and your liability's increasing at the same time. So the cost of that, that type of financing program is how much interest expense we're willing to swallow to get it, you know, are we willing to pay interest to smooth out any kind of fee increase?
So have you played with these numbers at all yet?
I have not. And the reason being is, I'm not sure, and I don't want to speak for Steve, I'm not sure we have what that total program looks like and how much is absolutely needed. We'd want to, we'd want to start there and then kind of work down to the financing numbers, just specific to sanitary sewer.
But like, for instance, the type of revenue that that tapping fee could bring in, have we done any initial ball parking about that?
No. And what we would do, Commissioner Schaefer, is look at the past couple of years of development, look at our empty parcels or our parcels that are available for redevelopment, and we do this for sanitary sewer in an Act 537 plan, and look at future development, what that could entail. And perhaps it's a combination of all the revenue sources everybody's talked about, not just one.
Right.
That is, that is developer-driven, and so in better years, there's more, and in slower years, there's less.
I mean, we basically got told that, when the RHM guys came, that there's no more EDUs to be had. So it just doesn't seem like a great plan to count on that revenue.
Once I, once we get this problem fixed with Springfield, because right now, we don't have, I mean, this is a massive problem with Springfield in development. So it has to be addressed so the township can move forward in redeveloping and developing further, and it will get resolved.
So just on that note, would replacing our, you know, having a proactive system for replacing our sewer pipes count towards the goodwill we are trying to get on the EDU argument? Does that?
It's, as we stated last week, it's a case-by-case basis. So if there's a line that's severely deteriorated, like the hydrogen sulfide gas can actually eat away at an asbestos cement pipe, at the crown of the pipe, and it can collapse. So if that pipe is relatively tight, and we televise it and there's minimal infiltration, we still need to replace it, but we're not going to gain a lot. There are other pipes, again, in those older areas that are in two-foot sections, they're 100 years old. That's a lot of joints in an area. And I would think we would be able to stop infiltration in some of those. So it's twofold.
Credit for it.
By the way, just a parcel of information, assuming, I mean, my thought is, some developers coming forward and he's suing Springfield and the sewer system in general, that's what it's going to take to finally resolve this issue. On paper, though, if you look at the actual, like, when we disconnect the house, we don't get credit for that EDU. When Villanova, you remember the Villanova letter, where they're moving several, you know, hundreds of EDUs? We didn't get credit for any of those. So the engineer for RHM is saying right now that conservatively, we have like 450, 460 EDUs due to us. So, but it's going to end up in the courts, for sure.
Wait, didn't Villanova add a bunch of new EDUs to their, taking that piece and then adding another piece?
What was applied for was the net, Rich.
We, there's a decrease to Radnor Township. There was an increase to Lower Marion, but, and DEP would not count our decrease.
So one last, one last point to make on the sanitary sewer fund is that in the absence of a plan, or while those discussions take place, the repair-as-you-go method that we're currently in, I would be recommending that we carry a little bit more cash in the fund to be able to absorb these kind of costs. Reason being is that this repair now is going to chew up the rest of the cash that's in that fund, and now the general fund is going to have to pay for the balance, because there's just not enough in the sanitary sewer fund to pay for the entire repair. Now, that's not all said and done. We could, as part of the budget process, have the sanitary sewer fund pay the general fund back, so it doesn't have to end that way. But in the short term, we'll have to utilize general fund cash to plug the gap for this. So in situations where we're repairing as we go, to make sure that the fund can afford those repairs, a little bit more of a cash balance is needed in those funds.
Bill, is it a legal requirement that we only use sewer fees to pay for sewer systems?
Not with our Home Rule Charter. The board can decide. I think we had the discussion with the Banbury, as a matter of fact, and I'm sure we'll have others with other projects, where we pull different pieces of funding from different areas to pull the total project together, so the board could decide that, you know, a couple hundred thousand from the general fund to take care of this King of Prussia issue is fine, let's just move forward.
But the inverse is true, isn't it? That you cannot use the sewer fund for anything else other than sewer?
That is correct. That, but that's, that's set by, by this board with our sanitary sewer fund. And that, that holds true across all of our special revenue funds. So that was, that was kind of the end of the review. Just to recap, what I was hoping we were able to successfully cover is that making sure everyone understands the pay-as-you-use versus the pay-as-you-go concept, and how that is built into how the capital plan is currently structured. And then to get, to gain an understanding of the funding shortfall as it exists with the plan today, that it's just not as realistic to assume that those tax revenues are going to continue to come in. In fact, we saw last year that the tax revenues tail off a little bit. This year's behaving roughly the same way, although we're doing a little bit better than we were a year ago at this point. But they're not coming in at the same level over and above our estimates. So relying on that as a annual source to fund the capital program does not seem realistic year over year. So again, the purpose of this discussion wasn't to focus in on specific projects or dollar amounts, but more on the concepts and why, when you hear the administration say, we feel like we have a shortfall in our capital funding, this is what's drawing us to that conclusion. So I guess at this point, there is other, other work being done on this topic, as requested by the board back in January. Carfac is working on the capital funding presentation. That will be presented in the coming months as we get into the budget. The other topic that was on the special Board of Commissioners meeting list was the pension. The same holds true there. Carfac has done some work on that front, and they'll have a presentation there. The one note I'll make with that is we're, the township is... The one note I'll make with that is we're, the township is due for our actuarial update. It'll be dated 1/1/2017. We're holding off having Mock and Hop move forward with putting that together until we have these discussions with the board to make sure that when, when Mock and Hop does put that actuarial update together, it's including the, the board's, the, the board's decisions on some of those aspects in it. The interest rate assumption, some of the funding discussions. So that's part of why we didn't want to get into that tonight. Mock and Hop was not available to be here. And since we have a little bit of time before we have to start really hammering that home, we wanted to make sure they were here to answer all the questions so that we didn't have a full discussion on it. The board come up with a, a lot of questions that we would lean on Mock and Hop to answer anyway. We're hoping to have them here for that discussion.
Bill, would that be in our next special meeting in September, or is that some going to be during our regular time, one of our regular meetings?
We would hope that it would be by then, yes. So we'll, we can, there's, I think there's still some planning to be done on when Carfac can give their presentation. Obviously, there's no special meetings, but whether or not that could fit within a regular board meeting, we'll figure that out.
We have one in September.
September 18th.
September, the special meeting is September, but if, if we want to have Carfac present ahead of that to help set the table, or, tho, those are still things that we're, we're figuring out in terms of timing. But the, the ultimate date would be the special meeting in September because at the conclusion of that meeting, we can give Mock and Hop the green light to go. They'll need roughly six weeks to put their, no, not six weeks, they'll need three weeks to put their presentation together, which still gives us time to make sure it's included in the budget before it gets too close to adoption time. So that still fits within the timetable. At the same time, over the next couple of months, we'll be working administratively to make sure that the capital plan is updated from the departmental aspect. I know that in the last couple of years, there have been projects that have come up during those discussions from specific commissioners. We don't have to have a decision tonight, but I was wondering if we could think about how we want to have those discussions so that those projects can be incorporated into the budget discussions while we're talking about the whole budget instead of piecemeal. Like tonight, getting into the specifics of projects tonight when we're not talking about pension or anything else in the budget, it seems to make sense to have that discussion when everything's in front of us.
But my two cents on this are, I, I want to avoid having us be confronted with a real need in 2018 that is not budgeted. For example, sidewalks. Sidewalks came up a couple of times in my district, my ward, and I ran into problems here on the board because people said, well, there's no money for it. Good observation. I just want to make sure that when we get to, to the time in September, when we talk about these things, that there's money put in there for things that we don't foresee today or in September, and that may come up in March or April. That's what I, I want.
Well, we do have a, what do, what did we call it? The discretionary?
Yeah, the board.
Line item. And, you know, maybe that's something we had spent some time talking about is what a, what a reasonable figure for that is, anticipating what I would consider sort of smaller projects, smaller sidewalk projects. But of course, there are some pretty big potential capital expenditures looming out there, like the Willows, that we would need to talk about, obviously, in terms of this budget process. I mean, to me, that's the biggest one that's not in our budget right now, that if we decide to move forward, we would have to have a long, hard talk about it. So, you know, maybe we have three meetings before the special meeting, two meetings, I think, two more meetings. One, one more in July, one more in August, and then one in the beginning of September.
Yep, yep.
And it might be worth putting it on the agenda to discuss things, capital needs that are not already in the budget, that we think are reasonable, that we should start talking about. And by that time, we might be far enough along with the Willows process to decide whether that's part of that conversation, especially if it's in the beginning of September.
I have a couple of questions. So Bill, fair to say, looking at this, is, is there a current balance in the capital fund that hovers around a million and a half?
Yes.
And from year to year, given the, the level of a sort of precision that we have tonight, which is the high level, we're spending about 1.3 million historically per year, maintaining that current level at roughly one and a half million.
Well, the capital plan actually assumes that we'll spend that fund balance down to roughly half a million.
Yes, yeah, so, so that's the dilemma, is that historically, over the last six, seven years, we've transferred about a million and a half in to the capital fund from the general fund. And that, with the unexpected increases in tax revenue that we didn't budget, allowed us to do our full array of capital projects that we did and still maintain our budget, or, excuse me, still maintain our balance at around a million and a half.
Yeah.
And what that graph is, that takeaway from that graph, is that you're projecting that unless we do something differently and we still spend a million and a half, transfer a million and a half from the general fund into the capital fund, roughly two years, that fund will be depleted.
Yes.
Okay, so we have to, as I see it, we just have to, we need a, and I know it sounds simple, I know it's not this simple, but we need the comprehensive list of the 35, 40 projects that you have to do. And then we need sort of the matrix of, to do those, you need this amount of cash, like how much would have to come into this fund. And then we have to be, we have to decide what is our, what is our limit. So likely, it's, if we're going to continue spending from the capital fund, we're going to have to transfer more from the general fund, or we're going to have to cut projects. So there is some hard choice involved for us. So we're going to have to cut projects if we choose not to spend more money. So that's one observation, as I see it. A second one, I'm not sure why we don't have a tapping fee. It would make sense for us to have one. My sense is we should have one. So I wasn't aware that we don't have one, so my sense is we should. Second, it's, we should have some kind of pipe replacement program. I don't know that we need to, you know, it should be an amount. It should be, you know, there's a, like, even that 20% that you identified, if you raise the sewer fee by 20%, that would likely produce about a million dollars. And that million dollars would then allow us to have preliminary engineering, engineering construction. And it just has to settle through every year. It isn't every year we decide we're going to build the entire system again. It's every year we say, we have a million dollars, what's the most urgent problem that we can solve for that amount of money, recognizing that we have to do the preliminary engineering and the, the design engineering to it. So it's, it's sort of the same thing that I'm asking for with stormwater. We need to set the amount, and then you do the best you can on the amount that we spend. I, I don't think it's, it's, to me, it's not prudent to say, we're going to rebuild the whole system, you guys tell us how much it's going to cost. It's, I, I might be willing to agree to a 20% increase in the stormwater fee, or, excuse me, in the sanitary fee, if I know that that fee is going to nothing but the design of, of pipes. And then you just have to do the best you can with that. So, okay. And then the last would just be that sort of generalized list. I'm, I'm not real comfortable with the idea of large amounts of money with uncertain things that we get to in the future. So Jim, my, my response to your dilemma is, is not to have money in there for things that we don't see, but to try to foresee them in the fall. And if we don't foresee them in the fall, then we just have to wait a year and foresee them next fall. So I, I would be uncomfortable with large amounts of money for unforeseen projects.
A question for Steve. You know, in most other industries than the public industry, if you will, there are fairly decent predictive models for determining replacement where, that kind of thing. Is there any such thing like that for a sewer system?
You can go on Pipe Life, the life of the pipe and others like that, but on the whole, it's usually done by visual inspection, you know, via CCTV, run the camera through it, create a report, and then you do exactly, as Commissioner Curly said, we start to prioritize projects. And we, we have that now. And then, but that's, that's the main thing. It's usually physical inspection, other than perhaps a force main, a metallic type where, where you can pull it, like in the oil industry, you pull, they called a pig or other things, you pull through. But the majority of time, it's based on a physical, visual inspection of the pipe.
Now, we, we keep talking about pipes here, but there's obviously other parts to this system. I'm thinking pump stations.
We do. We have, we go from normal maintenance where we have valves to be replaced to pump stations that need to be upgraded from a capacity standpoint. We have over 1,500 manholes in the system. We should have a progressive, again, within budget, manhole restoration program. We, we have done some of them in the past. There's many products that we used. So you're dead on. They're, they are the biggest items.
Are there any other pumping stations that, like the issue we had on Heather, where we can actually eliminate them?
I don't know that we can eliminate, I mean, that was the perfect scenario.
That was a special.
That was great that we had a, we were able to do a gravity connection. I, I believe the other ones are placed at those low points and, you know, and then we're pumping up. But there's things we could do to them to make them more efficient and convey more flow and a better efficient rate. But, and King of Prussia Pumping Station, this whole project aside, is, is one of them.
Ready.
I would caution against talking about 20% increases in fees to the residents. Sanitary sewer bill can be a thousand dollars, and changing it from 1,200, from a thousand to 1,200 is a big jump. And it's, it's a necessary thing, so to me, that's a, that large an increase is a concern. And financing particular projects would seem to be a, a more tenable solution.
I would second and support John's motion and idea of instituting the tapping fees. I know when, when we were in discussion with Villanova and we met with Lower Marion to talk to them about their transfer of EDUs over there and how they were handling all that sewage, I was surprised at the fact that they were charging tapping fees as my first introduction to that. We had nothing, and I later found out that there was a resistance to the board in the past to even talking about it, so now.
Radnor is an anomaly in the tapping fee situation.
That's what you were saying, and that's what John Rice was saying, and that's what the people in Lower Marion were saying. And also, there was a big disparity in terms of the sewer fees, what they were paying per gallon and all that kind of thing, per unit. So that, we should look at that. They were higher. They were much higher. And in fact, I know that because of that, Villanova was paying a substantial increase to make that transfer. But in their minds, it was still less than if they had to build a whole new system for us or whatever was involved in upgrading our system, but it was a significant amount of money. So whatever, no matter how many EDUs we have coming for us, we should be talking about instituting tapping fees and, and somehow keeping pace with inflation and everything else on our, and our neighbors in terms of what our fees are, whatever that number turns out to be. One nice thing I think that comes out is the dividend, is that, Steve, I think those kinds of actions in terms of the projects that we're talking about that this would fund, those were some of the things that would be looked upon favorably by RHM and DEP in terms of giving us some of that relief that we wanted to for EDUs. Was that not correct?
And, and part of the, the program could be, again, a lot of townships, we've done it in the past, is, is an I&amp;I program where you're not just going out and replacing bad pipes. You take whatever the, the money the board gives us, a portion of that is cordoned off for, for just the televising and inspecting, and that in and of itself generates more projects. Whether it be solely an I&amp;I project where we line a pipe to stop infiltration or exfiltration, or we replace a pipe. But that could all be worked into that, in that method.
Yeah. My take, and unless I was wrong from the RHM presentation, there was no way that they could measure any of this, and DEP wasn't even interested in measuring this. It was more of a qualitative, what are you doing to help the situation out, and that these things could fall into that practice. So I think that's a good way all the way around.
It's not directly measured, but they can infer it based on, because they monitor things like rainfall total flow and those kind of things. For example, the dramatic increase in the last 15 years in peak flows, even in wet years. So that only happens one way.
One of the things, Steve, that we have in Radnor is a reputation for excessively high permit fees. But what people don't know is that there's no tap fee for the sewer, so that kind of offsets it. So we should, presumably, someone in the past has made that calculus that we will not charge that because of whatever the reasons. It's too, it's too onerous on various constituents. But adding a new tap fee in conjunction with our already perceived high permit fees could be problematic, at least from an image standpoint.
Commissioner Booker, I can't speak for, I'm not sure what permits, but I know that our grading permit fees, actually, I'm, I'm going to be requesting to come before the board later this year at budget time to, to make some changes to our grading permit fees. We're actually, I think, on the low side when you compare us to other townships.
You've never heard any developer say Radnor permit fees are excessive?
I, I only deal with the grading permits and the subdivision land development, and those fees are, are, I haven't heard anybody.
Developers say fees are high in every township that they're working in at that particular moment. I mean, that is just the way it goes.
What I heard this past weekend was that ours are especially high compared to all of the other ones. And, and that's generally known.
Yeah, I've, I've never heard, I've never heard that. I'm not sure who, who's saying that, so. Be more than happy to, do you pass the names of those along? Home properties?
Home developers. Oh, oh. It's, it's widely, this is widely known, Radnor's very high permit fees.
Home builders, okay.
Bill, I have a question for you that you are not prepared to answer, so.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah, it's a specific question, but I want to start, us to start thinking about it. So in years past, we have, as Don explained, sort of bridged the gap of what we need to spend by using prior year surpluses. So for, and usually, it's sort of a year backed up because we have to wait for it to be audited and, and totally kosher. And so my question, we ended 2016 with a fund balance of around $9 million, and now we've been audited, I think we got it a week or so ago.
Yep.
Do you have a ballpark in your head about what the surplus available from 2016 will be? And if you don't, well, I mean, when we're ready to discuss this, that will factor into our discussion, obviously.
Yes, it's a positive number.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little, the, oh, I'll get into more details when we get into it, but the number included in our 2016 fund balance includes dollars that the board allocated in '16 that were transferred in '17. So we're going to have to take what that number is, subtract out the amounts that were allocated already, and that will be a net.
Mm-hmm.
But there, it is a positive number.
Right.
So there'll be something there, in hundreds of thousands.
Right. And so that is, I mean, as Don observed, that is a little bit of why we haven't ever actually bit the bullet and, you know, had a dedicated tax increase or a bond issue for these long-term liabilities because sort of magically, every year, we've been able to kind of cover from, you know, budgeting that was conservative and true results that were better than we anticipated. So, you know, at some point, that doesn't work. But, I mean, in the, in the eight years that Don and I have been on this board, we've been pretty lucky on that front.
Yeah.
So.
So Bill, comfortable at this point saying it's not going to be on the order of magnitude that it had been in the past that allowed us to do what we had done in the past. So, so that curve is likely the prediction, whether it gets projected out nine months or a year is a detail, but sometime in the next two to three years that you see that or a year is a detail, but sometime in the next two to three years, that you see that crossing into the negative territory.
Yeah, I do. Absent unexpected increases in revenue.
Right, and there are always unexpected increases. That's, that's the lucky part.
Yeah, I mean, there's a large, we go through this during our, our budget discussions, and at the next board meeting, when I do the quarterly update, you'll hear it again. So much of our revenue is reactionary too.
Mm-hmm.
It's not anything that we have any kind of direct control over.
Right.
So, once again, that chart that you're showing, the fund cash, your view is that we will not have an extraordinary item that will change the curve of that graph?
Yeah, as I stand here now, it's tough to predict that, or, it's tough to say with any confidence that over the next couple of years, we're going to, our tax revenue's going to exceed expectations by millions of dollars. I just...
Which is what we'd expect, too, so I, and what I would also note is that we pointed out from the second quarter review of, or from our, our full year review, that we were actually down on our business privilege tax revenue.
Yeah, we, well, we were down on what we thought they were going to end up. We had budgeted an increase, it came in under what we thought...
Right, it came in, it came in below that. And, we're unlikely to have huge windfalls on business privilege and mercantile tax audit at this point because we've audited just about everybody in the township, I would say, right?
Well, in, like any other, it's, it's difficult to predict what those outcomes might be, too.
Well, thank you, Bill. This was really helpful for us to get our heads into this process early on. I think it will make the process smoother and hopefully, as painless as possible. Unless anybody else has any other comments, I do have one item of new business that I wanted to mention tonight before we adjourn. Today, we all, the, all the commissioners received a request from our consultant at Barton Partners, Mark Evans, and he was asking for, I guess, authorization to meet with staff over the next two weeks to do some fact-finding about the mansion. I just wanted to have a little chat about that publicly because my first reaction and my inclination is, he doesn't need our authorization, you know, we already authorized and adopted the proposal, which contains that process. So, I just wanted to throw it out there and make sure nobody objects to him.
No objection. My, the one concern, though, is he shouldn't be, which I'm assuming he's not going to be reaching out to them for their opinion on what we should do with it.
Just fact-finding.
Yes, he's, he can get the numbers from them, but it's not their place to say that, you know, it should be 60 weddings a year, or 10 weddings a year.
Right, right.
That's our place. So, facts only, but certainly no, no, no opinions on the use of the building.
Okay, so, Bob, would you mind communicating to him that we, the board, discussed it and we're fine with the fact-finding mission he can meet at your leadership?
Well, is anybody else going to have any comment besides Don? I appreciate Don's. Why don't they, we really talked about it, did we? Don just mentioned that. I, so, before you, before you do that, Bob, let's talk a little bit more in detail. What do we have in your placeholder bill in the budget for, for the Willows? Do you have that million dollars in there? Or, or nothing?
Yeah, no, at this point, there's nothing specifically budgeted. There are some funds left over from, going back to the $8 million settlement, the board had allocated 1.1 million to the Willows for various improvements. One was the bridge. We had some others identified at the time that we have not moved forward with. So, there is, there are some dollars there, but there's nothing budgeted specifically toward improvements.
Right, because with the RFP, and what Barton Partners is working on, is really a million-dollar base number retaining that building. So, that's, that's their charge, and we haven't, and I did ask for more things to be considered, which was rejected. So, I thought we would have that kind of in there as a placeholder, but you're saying we don't have that in there right now. And, I, I didn't, my apologies, I didn't have a chance to really go through Barton Partners' requests there. Why exactly do they think that they need to speak with the township, and they didn't think so before, or is this, why are they asking permission? I'm, can anybody say?
It is in the proposal, they did ask before, it's in the proposal.
It was in the proposal, so, I just saw Commissioner Nagel wrote, "He doesn't believe that they need permission to speak with the township." I, I guess, so why, why, is there something that has occasioned their request? And Don put it succinctly in saying, "Hey, they can't solicit their opinion." I, I was wondering, what's drive, what drove, what drove this? If they had it in there, and is there something different?
Sure, I'll answer to that, and I think that's probably just the exact point that came up, is we didn't want to be in a position to where it would be that the administration's trying to skew anyone's opinion upon this at all, or trying to mislead, or, because I know there's always, we've heard the conspiracy theories before in the past, and what was going through before. They had asked to meet with us, I said, "We had not been given direction from the board at all to meet with them, to have discussion." So, I'd said that it would be up to the board if they wanted to. To us, our opinion is, we, you know, we've made multiple recommendations, this is to be one where they were independent, and they were working with the steering committee, looking for public input and direction from the board. So, really, to meet with us, I, it's very hard for us not to sit there, I don't know what questions they're going to ask. So, if they ask questions of our opinion to me to, I don't know how we sit, it's a very awkward scenario. So, my recommendation would be is, everything we've had in that you can see on, you pick up on YouTube, we can give you links, everything's been out there in all the presentations, so for them to sit with us, we, we've gone through this enough, and again, I don't want to be pigeonholed to where, well, you might have said something that gave an opinion or that, or misled them somehow, or gave them an opinion somehow. That's, I, I don't want to be in that, that, that position, because any conversation they have with us, you're going to ask staff who have dealt with it, have been involved with this, "I don't know how you draw that line."
So, the specific request was to meet with the staff to, to, to discuss the Willows mansion, its condition, historic patterns of use, operations, and scheduling. And I think that we have a professional and competent enough group to address those issues without being accused of...
Well, what I hear is the township manager saying, in his view, he would prefer that he not speak with these folks because he doesn't believe that there's any way that their opinions and views would not somehow come through, or at least be, they, they could at least be looked upon as trying to influence it through that contact. I actually understand Bob's concern with this. And I, here's what I would say, though, the, the group that's planning the Willows was saying, "Hey, there's a township component of it. We need somebody who's not going to run it, who's going to open it and close it, and be responsible for it." Also, they, what they're concerned with, they want to make sure that the grounds and that work that's ongoing, which is part of the township work, is excluded from their elements that they're working on. So, I think that those are legitimate issues to discuss with staff, but would actually agree with Bob, that what they are specifically asking for, patterns of use and condition, they have that, and, and I would agree with Bob that they don't need to talk with Bob about that. If they want to talk about, "We need somebody who's going to be responsible from Parks and Rec, or from facilities, or Public Works, to open and close and be responsible for the facility, in addition to running it, and we need to have that interface," that would be one thing. But, I, I would recommend that we use Bob's view and have them not speak with him.
What is the whail of the board here? Do you want to take a vote on this, or do we just go with consensus?
I think that they have specific questions. Rather than have them chased down every YouTube to go figure out what the answer is, I think they ought to be able to ask their questions about, which is what they said. It's condition, historic patterns of use, this could be a very short...
We don't need any action, as I see it. Just, they can ask their questions, and Bob, if you're uncomfortable answering them, you can not answer them.
There you go. It was in the proposal, we approved the proposal.
I'm comfortable answering anything they have, it's just very hard to come, how do you determine what's, I mean, you're going to ask, they're going to ask us questions, and I'm sure they're going to ask opinions, and that's, you're going to ask that.
Well, we trust your, we trust your professional judgment to answer their questions, give them their facts, and let the conspiracy theorists go. Exactly. All right, so, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.